Council special meeting for Tuesday, December 13th for the Town of Monument. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Erickson, will you take role, please?
Mayor Protem Elliott.
Here.
Councilmember Lakine.
Here.
Councilmember Ramos.
Here.
Councilmember Romanella.
Here.
Councilmember Shaining.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
On the agenda before us, we have two resolutions, and I'd like to just give just a brief bullet point summary before reading the resolutions. There is the Citizens for Home Rule Committee that filed a finance report. Oh, excuse me. I do want to ask, even though this is a special meeting and we don't approve a consent agenda, do any of you have a change to the agenda?
I do. I'd like to remove Agenda Item 3A.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Erickson, would you like to take role?
Point order. There has been no description, and we have no paperwork on any of the items that are in this agenda. There is no board packet. I have no idea what I'm voting for or what I'm not voting for. So I would like to know where the information is that typically accompanies the agenda on any meeting that we have that includes board packet with the data, the context that we're supposed to be voting on.
Yeah, so the reason why there is no board packet is because the information that we are seeking is information that is going to come from the future. We would like to propose that there is an investigation, which I was going to go into in just a second as to why, and therefore, because the investigation has not taken place yet, we do not have the information behind this resolution in regards to backing this up.
I don't, I guess I don't understand that. We vote on many things that haven't taken place yet. We don't have any information for this resolution at all?
It was not provided with the agenda, but there will be information to come that will be provided to us, assuming that there is an investigation.
So can you explain what we're removing here from the agenda, what this was pertaining to?
So Councilmember Romanella would like to remove 3A, a discussion relating to town personnel as it relates to the Fair Campaign Practices Act and potential violation of that. But things are a little bit out of order right now as far as the order of the numbers on the agenda.
And why are we removing it?
We would like to have legal counsel here that is representative to be able to provide a discussion and advice, and we do not have that tonight.
Additionally, we're not, we don't necessarily know that there was any malfeasance on behalf of any staff members at this time, so there's no point in any discussion on that item.
Who's "we"? It sounds like you've-
All of us. Nobody knows that yet. So since nobody has the answer to that question yet until this investigation is complete, which will be by December 30th, and we will define that in the first resolution, there's no, there's nothing to be gained by any discussion about the staff at this time.
So we have a motion to remove-
When was that initially put on there? Is it just like a jab at the staff?
I can speak for myself. I don't take jabs at the staff.
Why was that initially put on? Who were we investigating initially in the staff?
We don't know yet that yet. That will come out of the scope of this investigation if there was any wrongdoing on behalf of the staff. That has not been defined at this time.
So just a blanket thing that we put out there?
Yeah.
You think there was a violation against the staff?
Yeah, how would that impact the town staff? So we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second to remove this Item 3A. Ms. Erickson, would you like to take role?
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Lakine.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaining.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramos.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott.
Yes. So back to just a very brief summary of to why we have these resolutions. Many of you are probably aware that there were campaign finance reports, as with every campaign, and the Citizens for Home Rule declared $5 for what was seen to be signs and door hangers out throughout the town, and we know those cost a lot more than $5. So I personally filled out a complaint and submitted it to the town to understand exactly how were these door hangers and these yard signs paid for beyond the $5 that were declared in the report. So what came back as a response to my complaint was an updated report that declared $2,500, and the $2,500 was from an in-kind donation from the Town of Monument to the Citizens for Home Rule. And in my opinion, and obviously other people's opinions, why we're here, that is electioneering. That is illegal use of the town's tax dollars for supporting a ballot issue, a particular side of a ballot issue, and that's illegal. And my perspective on this is whether it's $500 or $500,000 use of the taxpayers' money in the Town of Monument, that's illegal and it needs to be looked into. And so that's why we're here tonight with the special meeting and the two resolutions that we have before us. So as far as the first resolution is concerned, Resolution Number 94-2022, this is a resolution to launch the investigation on Fair Campaign Practices Act to investigate in-kind donation from the Town of Monument to the Monument for Home Rule Issue Committee for signs and door hangers. The investigation, which is to be paid for by the Town of Monument, requires that the town staff and any others to be investigated fully cooperate with the investigative attorney during interviews, provisions of documents, access to emails and phone records, and timely responses to phone calls and email questions as requested by the attorney. The investigator will provide weekly updates to the town council on approximate dates, approximately December 19th and December 27th, with the goal to have the investigation completed by December 30th, 2022. Our intent is to not drag this out. Our intent is to be efficient and use our time wisely so that we are not burning hourly rates of the attorney that we propose to hire for this investigation. And obviously, our town attorney cannot be involved with this, the interim attorney, Catherine Sellers, because she supported the Home Rule Committee and had advised the Home Rule Committee, and so therefore, we, I believe that she's extremely conflicted and cannot have any part of this, and potentially could be investigated as well. Do we have any questions or discussion related to Resolution 94-2022?
I supported the Home Rule Committee. Does that mean I'm biased? You didn't support the Home Rule Committee? Does that mean you're biased?
No, let me, let me add to that. I think in the state of Colorado, election integrity is critical. We all took an oath to uphold the law, and that's really what this is all about. I don't want us to get into a situation where we're pointing fingers and rush to judgment. That's why I believe we need an investigation. Based on the document that Mayor Protem Kelly found, we have probable cause for electioneering. According to Colorado Resolution, I mean Colorado Revised Statute 1-45-117, 1A, 1B, it prohibits government entities, not an individual such as yourself or Ms. Kelly. It prohibits government entities from contributing to issue committees. So anyway, so I believe it's time, based off the evidence that we have, that we do an investigation and we find out what's behind all this. I mean, it could be something as simple as we did not know, but the question becomes, did our attorney hear this going on and did the attorney fail to advise? Or did our attorney not know? See, the answer, the point is, there are so many questions that are out here that nobody really knows the answer to, and I don't want us to be in a situation, as I said, to rush to judgment. I want to have a thorough investigation within the timeframe that we have, and hopefully by the end, December 30th or whatever, that we can present a report that is available to the board, and the next board, if they so choose, can take action on the evidence that they find. But again, we don't want to get into a situation where we're pointing fingers. We want to be in a situation where we have an outside counsel, and later on, we'll talk about Mr. Gessler. He was former Secretary of State for the state of Colorado. He's an expert in election law, so I think he'd be very qualified for this position, for this situation.
Thank you. I'd like to add that also, there's three of us that will be leaving the board, and we want to go out to and let the Town of Monument know that we're transparent and that if we have a situation that we think could potentially be illegal, we're going to investigate it. And then when the next board comes on, if the investigation isn't complete, we hope that they do complete it.
Excuse me. This, this is the board's time to discuss things right now, sorry. Public comment is, is on, on the agenda, and certainly I would like to hear from you. So if you don't mind, I would like to address some of the verbiage in the resolution. You have in here any others. That is a very broad statement. I don't believe that the town or the board has the authority to just randomly investigate people that are not in the town's purview, the actual staff of the town or board members, if you will. What is, what does it mean by any others? Who do you plan to investigate that's not part of the town?
So-
And under what authority?
So I'll, I'll speak for myself in that I have no specific plans to investigate somebody in particular, but as you know, when they begin an investigation, there's discovery, and that can lead to various people that potentially might need to be investigated based on the discovery, but I certainly can't state that, none of us can state that as to who that might be. Therefore, that's why it is vague.
Okay. And just for the record, after January 3rd, should the investigation not be complete, I maintain that I will continue the investigation and ensure that the board follows suit until an answer has been provided and there's been remedy.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion?
So I would just like to say, at this time, we just, as Mayor Protem Elliott stressed, we just, we don't know the, the direction of the investigation yet. We just know that this wasn't our money. This, it's the taxpayer's money. And there's a difference here in some of these discussions, because when taxpayer funds are used, we do owe the public some explanation. It was never our money to begin with. So it seems like, at first glance, to some people, a simple issue of, well, let's just give the money back or correct the mistake, but this isn't a filing issue. This is the electioneering by a town entity, and there is a clear law against this. And so if it seems like it's not a big deal to you, then I would just ask you to think, if you were on the other side of the issue, how might you feel? Or if you were one of the candidates that were impacted by this, how might you feel? There was a breach of public trust here. Without the public trust in what you pay via your tax dollars, we don't have anything. So that's why we're investigating this, because we owe it to you guys in this room to figure out how this happened. I have some emails, which I'll discuss in a second, but we owe it to you guys to figure out how this happened to make sure that it can't happen again, and that's why we're here tonight. So with that, we don't have any idea with the scope of this investigation. I did ask for additional info on the invoice from Tri-Lex Printing and via our town manager. I was given documents that show Santa Abbott, who was one of the Home Rule Commissioners, directing the invoice to the Town of Monument to be paid. C.C. Brandy Turner, there, there are, there is approval by the town manager. There's all kinds of people in the finance department. I see images here. So again, this is why we owe it to, to the taxpayer, because there are some things that potentially happen that we just don't want to see happen again. So thank you.
I, I think it's ridiculous to say your, that taxpayer money is so important, and that's why we are going to waste $20,000 on an investigation to potentially gain back $2,500. That's, that's absolutely just silly in, in any measure. You, you don't spend $20,000 to gain $2,500 back from, for the town.
With all due respect, you don't get to make that decision on behalf of the taxpayer as to what's silly and what's not when it comes to one dime being spent, whether it's 25 cents-
I'm just gonna go ahead and keep talking.
...a million dollars. We have to figure out how it happens so it doesn't happen again for $500,000.
For $20,000, we, it is, is so insane that this is even an option. It, it is insane. It's crazy to think that spending $20,000 to potentially gain back $2,500 is even an option here today is crazy to me. We can do an investigation.
Of the investigation yet, but secondarily, I will just let you sit with that by saying that it's crazy to investigate how-
I never said that. It's great to investigate. We've already directed our town manager, Mike Foreman, to begin an investigation. I believe it's been started. There's a huge difference between investigating and coming up with the solution and in fighting for the town versus wasting money over an investigation because we didn't get our way. There's a huge difference. I don't want to waste town money. I want an investigation. I want to make sure everything was done properly, and if not, let's find out what, what the remedy is. I'm not going to waste town money, $20,000, to go over an investigation when the potential reward is $2,500.
It's not a $2,500 reward. It's the reward of knowing that it cannot happen again, so that when it's $100,000 and it's an issue that affects you, it doesn't happen.
We don't know-
Don't know that yet.
We don't know the actual costs, but what we do know is that what's it, what's really at stake is election integrity. And if people don't trust our elections and that they're done fairly, I think that's the cost that we're really looking at here.
So couldn't, I still am wondering why the resolution is not written. There is nothing to support this agenda from a board packet perspective that the public could inspect, that we can inspect, the language of a resolution for both of them. We see resolutions all the time. They're drafted by town staff. They're drafted by our attorneys, and yet we, you brought us here for a special meeting unprepared for us to be looking at what the resolution is going to do. In either case, now granted, I do have supporting documentation from the perspective of a contract or a letter of engagement, as well as a resume, and we can get to that when we're discussing that particular resolution, but in the case of 94-2022, which is very long-winded, there is nothing to support the resolution. And we get resolutions every single meeting we are here, fully drafted for our approval.
Yes, well, certainly, time was limited. And secondly, on the Monument website are the finance documents and my complaint in regard, and the response to the complaint for the Citizens for Home Rule as far as what was documented with the $5 and then the $2,500 from the Town of Monument. So that's really easy to download, and you know Mr. IT.
I get that, but there's no, there's no teeth, the whereas and what is going, you know, all the things that have led you up to drafting the, the title of the resolution, you have no meat to state what it is we're trying to accomplish and in which mechanisms we're going to accomplish it by. And that is typically what you see in a resolution, and there's nothing here for me to review. I mean, I, am I supposed to now seek out this information as to asking the town for financial documents or receipts for purchases made? That's, that should be attached. It's, it's part of what every resolution has to it.
If you would, I, I see where you're going. If you, we, after we appoint the special attorney, this resolution will be more, this will be more clearly defined, as will the investigation. And if you'd like, I'd be fine with coming back in two days to go over the rest of that.
Or I'd be happy with 2A being the resolution-
Yeah.
-as it's worded right now, because that's really the, the crux of what we're looking for. Let's launch a-
And I get it, and given that we have no legal representation to tell me that that's a good or bad plan, I, I can't agree. I'm sorry. It's just not, it's just not like we have seen, that I have seen in two and a half years. I will bet money that Ron, you and Kelly and Jim, for the time that you've been here, have never gotten a resolution that has been a title only. And that's, that's my beef with it. Not, not to do, not doing the investigation and not what you're looking for, but not having a document that states what the resolution's going to do and what we're agreeing, agreeing to do. I mean, the same thing for the second one, but I got other issues with that one.
So what we want is an investigation, and we, board members, aren't doing an investigation beforehand to build up a board packet. The proof is out there on the internet as far as the $5 finance report and then the $2,500 in-kind donation from the town. That is really truly the crux of this. But I'd like to go back to Councilwoman Ramos. I'm turned out, so this is not sour grapes, and, but I definitely want to see this happen. So to your comment earlier about if this being sour grapes for certain elected official or people that ran in the election, it's not. It has to do, it's the principle, it's not, it's not-
To clarify that, ma'am, not, I am not saying winning or losing the personal election. I'm saying we each had a stance, a personal stance, as it be, on the committee itself. I did not mean on our personal election. So if we, whether or not we got the outcome of that 4A or not, is what I was referring to, not a personal election.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Any other comments? No.
No, I, I, I really do think Trustee Lakine or Councilmember Lakine is, is correct that we don't have, that even without digging into this, in the way I, I want to here in a second, I, I don't think we as council members should be, should be voting on what we see before us. It's not what we've gotten before. I don't think it's written properly, and to have very vague language, as Councilmember Lakine had pointed out before, where it says any other persons or any others to be investigated, it's, we should not be voting on anything that's written this way. Second, kind of aside from that, I, I do want to just say my somewhat personal feeling about this. I, I don't think it's fair to, to say that this had a major outcome in the election. I would imagine with how much money that was put into anti-4A, I, I'm sorry, 2A, my, my apologies, I don't see how any reasonable person would say that yes, 4, 2A signs were not going to be created. The money was taken, the money was going to be spent, in my opinion. I don't think in, any reasonable person would have, would think that there was going to be no signage created. So the issue isn't whether or not people were going to see signs that swayed their opinion. It was should that $2,500 have came from the town, should it have came somewhere else? The, the election has no sway in here. The signs, most likely, I think, a reasonable person would say would have been there either way. We would have signs saying yes, because there's going to be signs saying no. That's my personal stake on that. I, I don't see there's any reasonable way to say that this could affect the election and consider it electioneering.
Well, the electioneering part is the illegal use of the taxpayers' dollars regardless of the outcome of the election. That's where electioneering comes in. So that is why we're here, and that's why we have a resolution to launch an investigation on Fair Campaign Practices Act to investigate the in-kind donation from the town.
And I'm comfortable, given the speed at which this is moving and the competence of the special attorney to be appointed tonight, that in the coming days, he will recreate this, this, this resolution and the direction of the investigation in a manner that will reassure Trustee Lakine, and, I mean, I can't speak for him, but I think that he will make this more specific in the coming days. That's why we're hiring him. So I'm willing to accept that this isn't the usual process. This was a special meeting, and to trust that our, our special attorney will get the proper paperwork in order and get this investigation completed legally, and I'm willing to assume that risk here tonight.
Well, I'm not, I'm not opposed to using the language under 2A as the language for the resolution, and then if we want to come back later on and amend it and put more things on there, then we can, but I think it clearly states the objective, which is to do the, to do the investigation and get this started. I feel like time is of the essence. I want to be able to present to the new board the report and have a, so they have a clear understanding of what took place, and I believe it is our duty as, as trustees or town council people to, to enforce the law, and that's what we took an oath to do.
And we have a fiduciary duty to the town, and I do not understand how anybody could say, when we have other options of going through an investigation, how we could say we are, we are representing or we are actually upholding our fiduciary duty to the town to waste $20,000 to potentially gain $2,500.
We don't have other options for an investigation. That is not an investigation into what is happening here with this electioneering by the town. So this and every, we can't have staff investigate it because some of the staff are involved in approving the expenditure. So there's, it, it's just, it's not, again, I mean, what, and to say, well, it was $2,500, I keep hearing it's $2,500. What, I mean, what do you get to arbitrarily decide a threshold for spending people's money the wrong way?
Yes. I have a fiduciary duty to the town.
Okay.
So we can investigate-
Is 5,000 okay? Is 10,000 okay? Is 20,000 okay?
Wasting town money is not okay.
This isn't, money was spent illegally, so this is not wasted.
You, you don't know that it's illegal yet, so let's not, let's not-
That's why we want to investigate. Sorry, electioneering occurred, and so we have to figure out-
I am so, oh, I am so excited or motivated for the town to, I'm, I'm excited that this is in the open. I had no idea about it. Investigate away. I, I, my issue is not that you're investigating. We can investigate whether we're residents, whether we're here, whether we're in media, anybody can investigate, and I don't know what the best route is. What I'm saying we don't do is waste town money, and it's, it's just baffling me that it's gotten this far. $20,000 is, is not acceptable.
I, I would like to just make one more point, because I was just randomly scanning other resolutions that we typically vote on, and when a Colorado's revised statute or one of our ordinances is at play, they're called out. So whatever authority you feel that we have a right to do this investigation under, in order to deal with the conflict of electioneering and the like, you, there's nothing for me to look at to indicate the authority of either the Colorado Revised Statute, the Colorado Constitution, or town ordinance. of either the Colorado revised statute, the Colorado constitution or town ordinances. And that's the document that I expect to see to indicate how this, the how and the why this resolution is going to be voted on. And so without that, I, I, I can't. Now, that's, that's, this, I appreciate that. I know, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I, I figured you had something, but.
I gave it out last week.
So I have two suggestions.
Last week in the executive session.
The one that I was remote for, that two of us didn't get anything handed out to. I appreciate that, but again, I look on the website because you referred me to the internet and going to the town board docs. This is, these resolutions, as far as I'm concerned, with the lack of supporting documentation and, and language are not supportable for a vote.
So I'll have two suggestions as it relates to the wording of this resolution. Removing and any others and replacing that as and applicable personnel and elected officials. So replace and any others with that phrase. And then I also propose a resolution to launch the investigation on Fair Campaign Practices Act according to CRS 1-45-117, 1A, 1B, and include that in the resolution as well. And that is more specific.
Second that.
I, I do not have, because this is a, an emergency meeting. We don't have, I'm sorry, special meeting. We don't have people that I could, I, I can't bounce any of my questions off of our town attorney. I, I don't know how this is written in terms of a legal aspect. I have no law degree whatsoever and I always bounce back from, to our town when I have questions like that. So again, my issue is wasting town money on this. I'm completely open to having an investigation. I'm not open at all to wasting town money to do so.
Councilman Ramos, so if there's going to be an investigation that doesn't cost the town money, who do you propose conducts that investigation?
It would be great to have a full staff here to bounce questions off of, but we're in a special meeting. So maybe next meeting, we can put this on the agenda to discuss next meeting.
Well, I don't think we, time is of the essence. We don't have, I mean, investigation takes time to do. And I believe it's important that we move forward. So I make a motion that we adopt the language here at 2A as the resolution and the changes that were brought forth. If you want to read those changes.
Sure. Resolution to launch the investigation on Fair Campaign Practices Act according to CRS 1-45-117, 1A, 1B, and then replacing the language of and any others with requires that the town staff and applicable personnel and elected officials to be investigated fully are the replacements.
So I move that we adopt this language with the changes that are proposed by Mayor Protem Elliott.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Erickson?
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramos?
I need to, I need to ask a question. I don't know what I need to call. I'm not familiar with the language here. Point of order, is that what it would be? So I have a question actually to councilmember LeKind with your point. Right now, we're voting on a name change. Is that what it is?
Language change to accommodate.
We're not voting on any of this. We're voting to change the language of this. Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaining?
Yes.
Councilmember LeKind?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, so sorry, now my, my question here. I wish we had legal here so I could ask questions. Maybe Mr. Foreman. Maybe I would be asking you, if, if I believe we don't have, even with the name change, if I believe this is not something that we, we could vote on today, what are my options as a council member?
Unfortunately, as the town manager, I cannot answer that. You would need the town attorney here. The town attorney has told us today that neither her nor anyone from her firm could be here today.
So I, I think with that alone, it's just common sense. I, I do not have enough information. It's not that I'm a no vote. It's that I don't think we have enough resources here to vote on this. I, I don't think, I appreciate you taking out the, some of the language, but I'm not a lawyer. I don't have a law degree and I don't think it's, it's in the town's interest to vote on something when we don't have the resources to vote on it. I, I would suggest that we, we move this to a future meeting.
So that's a motion to move this to a future meeting.
This is my suggestion. I don't know. Councilmember? What would be the proper language if I wanted to, I guess, continue this on, to a date where we have a full staff to the next, I, I guess, the next scheduled meeting? So my language, I think, would be I put forward a motion to continue resol, resolution number 94, tag 2022, to the next scheduled meeting.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Councilmember LeKind?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaining?
No.
Councilmember Romanella?
No.
Councilmember Ramos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
No, because we don't have the time. Do we have a, do we have a motion to, for a resolution number 94, 2022, as reworded?
So I make a motion that we adopt resolution 94, 2022 with the changes that we've made. I believe it's critical. I believe this is critical that we adapt and move forward with the investigation.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Erickson?
Can you repeat, can you repeat who, who made the motion and who seconded?
I'm sorry?
Can you repeat who made the motion and who seconded?
Councilman Stevens made the motion. Would you like to be escorted out? Okay, so Mr. Councilman Stevens made the motion? And, wait a second.
Shaining, second. Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramos?
No.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaining?
Yes.
Councilmember LeKind?
No.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes for two. Order. Okay, the next resolution is number 95-2022. It's a resolution to hire a special attorney, Scott, Mr. Scott Gessler, for the investigation of the town of Monument related to Fair Campaign Practices Act by a legal signatory signature on Mr. Gessler's letter of engagement. Any comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, I've got several. Is Mr. Gessler here?
No, unfortunately, he was not able to make it tonight.
So, so the man, so the man can't even be cross-examined. So I guess here's my first question. How many meetings were held with potential candidates outside the public's purview by the four of you?
By the four of us? None.
None? So if that's the case, and how is this attorney selected? And why wasn't the board provided an opportunity to review a list of qualified candidates and interview them after SIRS, our provider of insurance, provided the town of Monument four candidates that could be reviewed? How did you come to this determination of one candidate who is guilty of an ethics violation for the exact same thing you want to investigate as being selected by only you or the four of you in some form of walking quorum, which is illegal? How did you come to this decision that we have one person to look at?
So just like when Catherine Sellers was voted in a couple of meetings ago, I had questioned Mr. Foreman about how many other firms had provided proposals and they didn't provide proposals because they weren't, they didn't respond or they couldn't help. I'm not exactly sure what the exact language was, but they didn't provide proposals. So there were four other attorneys that were called to determine if they could help out with this particular situation so that we could find somebody that was independent of home rule. These four attorneys actually were called before SIRS was able to get back to Mr. Foreman with names. And once we found one with municipal and election law experience, that was the person that ended up being named in this resolution as he agreed to be hired as a consultant at the same rate as Catherine Sellers.
Except for he's not even here to be, to be interviewed. Seriously? The man can't show up to an interview? Because that's really what this is about, is interviewing him, not blindly looking at his resume, which while may be impressive, he is still found guilty in a Denver court of law for this, for the violation that you want to investigate. Which means to me, he's automatically disqualified.
Yeah, I'm aware of that situation, but I'm certainly not going to speak for him.
It's in the paper. You don't have to speak for him, it's in the paper.
No, I understand that, but he personally can address that in the very near future.
Well, then, so we're not going to sign the bill before we read it. We can't vote for somebody who can't even show up.
So I, I think this is pretty obvious. I make a motion to, is it just, see, I wish we had just full staff here.
Yeah.
This would be crazy. So because I don't have our, our legal side to find the absolute best way, because this is a special meeting that was called last minute, I, I'm just going to go ahead and, and say I put forward a motion to deny, is that the correct language? To oppose resolution number 952022.
Do you have an alternative?
We're, we don't in this, it's just one person.
Second the motion.
If it was written differently, maybe we'd have something different to talk about.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
I apologize, councilmember.
I just wanted to hear it.
I put forward a motion to oppose resolution number 95, tag 2022, a resolution to hire special attorney Scott Geisler for the investigation of the town of Monument related to a Fair Campaign Practice Act.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Shaining?
No.
Councilmember Ramos?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
No.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
No, because I'd just like to see a postponement.
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Councilmember LeKind?
Yes.
I believe that the board should be able to interview, talk to anybody that we're going to hire. So I would be in favor of, of a postponement on this as well.
Second, second. Or sorry, sorry, I'm jumping ahead, I apologize. Go ahead, Mr. Romanella.
Okay, I would, I would, I would, I would make a motion to postpone this decision until the board can get its questions answered and speak with any individual that we are going to contract.
Second.
So hold on, in a second motion, do you want to set another meeting date for that?
We should post, I would.
That ought to be coordinated, I think.
Wait, can we not, hold on. That was a good question. Could we postpone this to another special meeting next week or do something like that? Or what can we do?
I think that's what needs to be coordinated because we don't know schedules.
Typically, you would postpone it to the next meeting, next scheduled meeting, to be a continuance.
About a special meeting, if we so choose.
You'd need to consult with your attorney about that.
Will do. Okay.
So another town meeting.
So I'm just making a simple motion to postpone at this point, so I can make this clear?
Yes.
A simple motion to postpone.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Shaining?
No.
Councilmember Ramos?
Sorry. You're, you made a motion to postpone.
Yes.
You seconded.
Yes.
Just clarifying, you saying no.
Yes.
Is it on me?
Yes.
Okay, and just, sorry, just to clarify.
Would you like to postpone?
Correct, just to clarify though, we don't have a date.
We do not. It's just postponed.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember LeKind?
Yes.
Okay, so we have deleted the council discussion item. So number four, number three now on the agenda is public comment. Floor is open for public comment.
I can wait for you to get back.
Give me a second.
That's cool, take your time.
Yeah, I, I handed it out in the last meetings. You can have it. Yeah, I didn't think about that. Sent out an email.
Thank you, I think this one was launched. Okay. Sublines?
Yeah, yeah. I feel like you probably have an unrecorded pandemic. There, there is going to be some language and I'm really sorry about that, just letting you give me a heads up. Not my words. You guys ready? Yeah, I, I won't be three minutes, Kelly, I won't be three minutes. You know, I mean, when you guys ready? Hey, Matt Brunk, 17136 Buffalo Valley Path. First of all, I, I know a lot of the community and what's going on and I feel like I have a really good pulse in my heartbeat. We want an investigation. We really do. I don't think anybody has any desire to have anything misappropriated or anything brushed under a rug. We want, but we want to do it appropriately and do it correctly. And this just all seems to be. And this just all seems to be put together with haste, to the point... And I don't really understand where it all went wrong, truthfully. There was 2A, there was home rule. I know some people started to run. And then, on the... It seemed to really take a turn with the classic homes. When Jim and Darcy both voted yes. I remember posting on Nextdoor that they voted yes, and they accepted developer funds. That's not anything that you guys didn't do. That's public record. You said you wouldn't, but you did. You took 14 grand. That's okay. We're not judging you for those things. You made a call. You did what you thought was best in the interest of you and the town. That's okay. But it's gotten so heated right now. Amy Stevens was back there. She told me, "Fuck you," and gave me the finger. I don't understand why she just did that. Seriously, she just did that. Something has gone massively wrong with this. I don't understand. We... You went after 2A with so many lies and deceits. There are reasons to go against 2A, sure. Absolutely, there's reasons to go against anything. But the amount that it came, the vitriol lies it came with, I don't understand. And so, please hear me on this. I can't speak for anybody. I'm all for an investigation. Absolutely. You're up there saying you value the taxpayer money. Do it right. Do it thorough. I guarantee you, I will be your biggest supporter in doing a thorough investigation. I will support anything. If an investigator calls me, I will be 100% honest across the board. It just needs to be done right. Interview lawyers. Interview those people. To me, Geisler, the fact that he was already found guilty for misappropriation of funds, to me, shows he may not be the right guy. And so, I'm all for it. I support all of you in this investigation. I know other people that I've talked to support an investigation as well. Everybody is frustrated with corruption in this town, in this country, and all these things. We want clarity, we want truth. I want truth more than anything else. I also value, if someone does something wrong, and they make a mistake, and they own up to it, there's value in that too, instead of sweeping under the rug. I'm not saying that shouldn't be dealt with, because there should be the proper consequences for electioneering or misappropriation of funds, whatever the law says. I totally get it, and I support it, because I support the Constitution and the laws that be. But please hear me on this. Do it right. Be clear. There seems to be a lot of stuff that backrund feelings. These guys didn't know when Geisler was brought on. Some of you did, some of you didn't. There just seems to be a lot of shadiness. So please be upfront, please be open. All we want is clarity. I will be as clear as I possibly can with you. I ask that you do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Steve King. First off, there is an investigation that's already been launched with the Secretary of State, and it's a mandatory investigation. And everybody will comply with the investigator, and, you know, accept the consequences, if there are any. But I need to make some other statements. First of all, this board has unilaterally decided that ordinances they approve are not really ordinances, but suggestions. Ordinance 29-2020 clearly states that your term has expired, and you are no longer representatives for the town of Monument, with the exception of Jim Romanello and the official mayor, Mitch Lakine. The rest of you are operating illegally. And by the rest of you, I'm specifically addressing Kelly Elliott, Jim Romanello, Ron Stevens, and Darcy Shaining, who has never elected anything. It's a sad day in Monument when citizens of this town are being constantly barraged by a group of rogue trustees who lost an election and are so vindictive that they're willing to spend tens of thousands of taxpayer dollars to punish people in the community for their loss, which you have no authority to do, and will open up all of you to personal lawsuits. Let's face it, everyone in this town knows your motivation, and it isn't because you suddenly developed an ethical bias. If you had any ethics, you would have realized that all the funds the town spent on promotional materials have been voluntarily paid back in full. If you had any ethics, you wouldn't have violated State Statute 1-13-109, which addresses false or reckless statements related to candidates or questions submitted to electors when you lied and deceived the public with your no-on-2A campaign. That is a criminal offense. If you had any ethics, you would have stepped down when your term expired on November 8. If you had any ethics, you would go out gracefully instead of burning down the town on your way out. If you had any ethics, you would have asked for a meeting with all the concern to investigate this yourselves, rather than making a spectacle of the town on local media. If you had any ethics, you would have discussed this openly without hiding behind an executive session where the public cannot discover your true motivations. The only people up there that have any ethics are Mitch Lakine and Redmond Ramos. The rest of you are suction on the town, and what little dignity we have left because of your agenda that started with ignoring your constituents and destroying the way of life for most Monument residents. Do the right thing and leave gracefully, instead of making Monument the laughingstock of the front range simply so you can harm others because your feelings were hurt.
Anyone else have a public comment? Anyone else?
Clark, 16976 Buffalo Valley Path. First of all, I am disappointed in the way the bullet points were presented, Mayor Pro Tem. There is an amended report to that $5 issue. There's also a decision from a hearing officer regarding Elliott versus Monument citizens of home rule. That decision was, the case is dismissed. That's a legal decision. Secondly, there were remedies other than this spectacle to resolve the issue. And the person who... I'm gobsmacked, but it was Andy Cohen. At the end of his piece, and interviewing one of the trustees, that said, there was a case in 2000, I believe it was '06, it could have been '03, I don't remember. But the way to remedy it was to pay back the funds. That was the amended report that has been neglected for being mentioned. And the reason that there was an amended report, we use some of your verbiage when you did an amended report on a major contributor. This was a mistake. It was a mistake that was made. It was honest. There was no intent to defraud, bribe, to anything other than what we thought was right, or they thought was right. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to make a public comment?
I have a couple businesses. And I would just ask, before you vote on this investigation, I'd like to ask a question. What do you plan to do with the data? Why are you trying to spend that kind of money? What are you trying to accomplish? Can you answer that?
We're not supposed to speak back in public comment, but we would like to prevent this from happening in the future.
You don't think you can do that? Outside of investigation, you're going to take some kind of data, and then you, as a board and your town attorney, are going to have to make a decision on how to prevent that in the future. Has nothing to do with your investigation. So I'd ask, before you spend more of our money, that you take a look at that. What are you going to do with the data? There's nothing you're going to do with that data. You can't do yourselves with your town attorney, doing your own investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to make a public comment?
My name's Dan Showalter. I live at 2276 Creek Valley Circle. I'll just say, I'm really disheartened. I'm disheartened with the politics in this town. It seems to me that... Let me have pause for a second. I think an investigation is an appropriate action. Okay? If there's any concern over misuse of funds, that's appropriate. And I encouraged everyone involved in the town, all the citizens, to support that. What concerns me is that there's investigation ongoing with the Secretary of State right now. There are alternatives that don't cost taxpayer money to conduct this investigation, and yet we have a board who says that they are concerned about protecting taxpayer interests, but are willing to pay an attorney to put more money than the taxpayers were, I'll say allegedly, taken for. Regardless of what your motivation or intent is, the optic from where I sit is that this is duplicitous and just malintended, and I'm sad.
Anyone else for public comment? President of Monument. So during the meeting this evening, Mitch Lakine, who will be our future mayor, has mentioned that he also recommends a review. And he has given his word here tonight, in public, saying that he plans to continue to pursue this even when you guys are gone. Why doesn't that seem to matter? What's the hurry of doing this right now before you leave, other than as a power play to say, "You guys voted me out, but I still have power over you for the next 15 days," or whatever? I don't understand that. Why do... And not only that, but if the Secretary of State is already a part of this, do you not have faith in... You know, those are elected officials too. Do you not have faith in them? We're paying them. We're paying them to do exactly what you want to pay more attorneys, more money, to do. What is it that they won't accomplish? That an extra $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 thrown at the problem could fix? Or address? So, two things. I don't understand what's... Why do we have to do this right now, before December 30, other than it takes care of it before you guys are gone, when Lakine has already said in a public forum, on record, that he plans to continue with it? And then to our Secretary of State, they're addressing this with their legal counsel as well. They're going to follow the statutes. But I don't understand why that's not good enough. We got to throw thousands more of our dollars at the same problem to a guy who has no ethics, who has done exactly what you're researching to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars? I don't understand. What do you have to prove there, Ms. Elliott? We're not supposed to comment during public comment? I'm not asking for a comment. I'm asking a question. I'm not allowed to ask questions? I just can't give a response, is what I'm saying. Well... So when do I... When do we, as citizens, get our questions answered? When does that happen? I don't set the rules. Anyone else for public comment?
My name's Patty Shank. I think you guys are disgusting. For the next future period of time, you will be talked about, and are being talked about, as disgusting, vindictive, horrible, 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 horrible people who have let this town down. We will be talking about you in the future, about how your vindictiveness has damaged our town, has put us on the news for having disgusting people who are just simply vindictive. There are two people here in this room on the dice tonight who are not disgusting, because they have not tried to damage this town, and that's Mitch and Red. The rest of you are horrible, horrible human beings. And we will be talking about you for the long-term future. And some of you ought to consider moving out of town, so that when we see you in safe way, we don't have to feel the way we do about you. You are awful, awful human beings.
Anyone else for public comment? You actually didn't use three minutes, so...
People will call me emotional. I don't disagree. But right now, my heart hurts a lot, because I know seeing and scanning some of your Facebook pages and things like that, you... I think oftentimes, we would vote similar ways, and we view similar things in this world, even worldviews. Many of you claim to be Christians and love Jesus Christ as your personal Savior. I've heard even some of you say that. And so, from that fact, I believe we'll see each other in heaven someday. And so, I'm not telling you how to... What to do, because obviously, we approach these things from a very different angle, and that's fine. But I do ask you, and I do appeal to you, to pray about it. Seek counsel from multiple people. Really seek. And I will do the same. I can't ask you to do something that I wouldn't do myself. Because for me to ask you to do that without doing that myself wouldn't be fair and wouldn't be right. Because I think all of us, my hope would be that you would look at this and go, you know, we are all sinners, and we need to... I'm not trying to preach the gospel, I'm really sorry. But on that note, we're all sinners, and we've all fallen short, so we're not going to get it right every time. And one of us is... Well, we're on opposite ends. So one of us is probably wrong. You know what I mean? And I believe I'm right, and you guys believe you're right, and that's okay. But I would just ask that you really, truly seek the Lord on this one, and really try to make the decisions that will best lift Him up. Because as much as I love the town of Monument, and as much as I love the United States, it's not going to be here eternally. And so, I just ask you to all seek the truth and how to best handle this situation to get an outcome that, I guess I'll straight up say it, that glorifies Him. Because there are people out there that are watching, all of us. And there are people that are going, "That's how Christians act, or that's how Republicans act, or that's how conservatives act." And it makes me sad, because if I do a bad job at portraying something that I believe in, that's on me. And so, I just ask that you guys would seek your heart, and seek counsel, and pray, and do what you need to do to really find what the right and appropriate actions are here. So, thank you so much, especially if we've gone over time, I apologize. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
John Alcorn, Jefferson Street. I voted against 2A, not because I didn't think it was a good idea, but because I didn't trust the council to put the town above their agenda, their personal agenda. And that reason has proven valid tonight, listening to what's been going on. As for the investigation, it should be investigated. But as the Mayor Pro Tem said, it may have been an honest mistake, it may have been a misunderstanding or something. Start the investigation internally, instead of wasting tens of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Anybody online, Drew? Chris Wagner, come off mute.
Hi, thank you. I am really disappointed that you guys are still sitting there. You know, I think most of the town would prefer that you would walk out right now. However, that's not the case. And an investigation is definitely in order. And I'd like to say, you know, Kristin Hubs, does that name ring a bell to anyone? I know you can't respond, but, you know, let it be on the record. Kristin Hubs looks like a fake profile and had some horrible things to say about our new mayor. That information will be going to the Secretary of State. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, can you come off mute, please, and proceed? Laura, come off mute. It's your turn for public comment. Laura, can... Chad Smith, it's your turn for public comment. Would you like to come off mute?
Good evening. Chad Smith, 16923 Buffalo Valley Path. I'm not going to take up the entire three minutes. I just wanted to point out the enormous blessing that we have before us tonight, that the four of you, Ron Stevens, Kelly Elliott, Darcy Shoning, sorry, the three of you, will no longer be on this board. will no longer be on this board come January. And that truly is a blessing. We still have to, still have to deal with Mr. Romanello, who has also been sold out to the big developers. And I'd like to point out also that the No On 2A campaign established on November 20th or October 20th, the very next day, Mr. Romanello, Ms. Elliott, and trustee or Councilman Stevens' wife, Amy, all donated the very next day, yet they claimed to know nothing about it. So I think it is important that we have an investigation. I think it is vitally important that the Secretary of State conducts that investigation. And I will personally be calling to advise them and make sure that they look at the correct documents during the, the course of that investigation. And include, you know, the Better Jobs Coalition and the Strategy Firm LLC as part of the scope of that investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Should we try Laura again, Drew? Do you see anybody with their hands raised? Okay, then I believe that's the end of public comment.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.